Question item, federal and state legislative priorities update.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'll just get the slideshow pulled up shortly here. There we go. All right, so my name is Sarah Langley, Public Affairs Director for the city. Myself, Bob Holmes, and Todd Medeska are all here tonight to discuss the council's 2023 legislative priorities. Before we get started, just a brief introduction. The legis-- sorry, the Legislative Affairs Team at the city is made up of myself, Bob, who is our federal lobbyist and is based in DC. He should be joining us online shortly. Todd, who's here with us in the room, is our state lobbyist, and he's based here in Flagstaff and then in Phoenix during the legislative session. And then Sean Johnson, our Chief of Staff to the Mayor and Council, also assists with legislative issues. So we are your legislative team, and our discussion this afternoon will begin with a quick overview of how the Intergovernmental Affairs Program works, how it functions, and what you can expect to see from us in the coming months. After that, I'll pass it over to Bob to give us an overview of the federal landscape and the draft 2023 federal priorities. And those are basically an update of last year's priorities based on accomplishments and kind of changing landscapes. And then, following the same format, we'll hear from Todd on the state landscape, and then we'll kind of go over some next steps and wrap up. So, to begin, the Intergovernmental Affairs Program is really centered around the priorities that we're going to create tonight. These priorities signal to staff and lobbyists what your key issues are as a council and where we should be focusing our time and energies. Of course, it's important to note that we can't focus on everything, so the list of priorities overall should be succinct and to the point, and it should also be, you know, easy to relay in a short period of time and easily understandable. Ideally, the priorities would also be strategic and would focus on areas that our legislators are interested in or focus on areas that we think will see movement this legislative session. The priorities also allow us to anticipate your positions on certain bills. So if a relevant bill is introduced, we can analyze your priorities and see where we think you might fall, because a lot of times that process can move very quickly, especially at the state level. If a relevant bill is introduced and doesn't clearly align with your priorities, we'll be sure to get back in front of you to see where you stand on that bill. And then, also, I wanted to note throughout the legislative session, you'll receive email updates from both Bob and Todd to keep you updated on current events. And then, lastly, this year, we are super excited to be able to return to in-person lobbying trips to both Washington DC and Phoenix. And then, for our new members of council, I wanted to note that we do have kind of a standing rotation that determines which council members go on which trips, and that just makes sure that everyone gets a chance to go on all the trips during their time on council. So I'll be reaching out to you with more details on those trips within the coming weeks. So that is a quick overview of our Legislative Affairs Program. I want to check if-- yep, I see Bob is online, so I will go ahead and hand it over to him, and he will walk us through kind of what we're seeing at the federal level. Thanks.
Great, thanks, Sarah, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Bob Holmes, it's good to see some familiar faces and some new faces, and I look forward to meeting you all. Just as a side note, it's not definite yet, but I look-- I'm looking to come out to Arizona and be in Flagstaff in two weeks, so hopefully, especially for those new members, we can meet then, and for the old members, we can see you again and talk about some of these priorities. And while we get into that, I just want to note, as Sarah did, that a lot of these-- a lot of these issues will look familiar, and, you know, we've accomplished a lot, so some of these are going to come off of the list. So with that, we-- let's see, if we can move on to the next slide, that'd be great. So, obviously, you know, Rio de Flago, we were joking with Scott Overton earlier today that we're on year 21 of this project. The Rio de Flago project has moved notoriously slow. That's part of the bureaucracy we're dealing with. Obviously, we have the rest of the money. Christine Cameron and really the whole city team has done an incredible job with regards to getting it ready, and hopefully, we'll have shovels in the ground in 2023. So that's very exciting. I see Councilmember Aslan pumping his fist. Yeah, so hopefully, we'll have shovels in the ground and get this project completed in a timely fashion. That will take folks out of the floodplain and, you know, protect a lot of very important assets here in the city. Obviously, there's going to be workforce development, which we know is important, childhood education. There's going to be a new emphasis this year, especially with this-- with the Republicans controlling the House on workforce development issues, especially as it relates to some of the vocational education and job training programs, Job Corps and things like that. So that's a place where I think we can lean in and be influential. So with that, we can move on to the next slide. Obviously, with Senator Sinema taking the lead on the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, IIJA, or the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law, as we call it, it created over 400 new programs, 85 in the transportation, specifically in the transportation grant space. There's tons of money available for roads, bridges. And frankly, it's one of the reasons why we were successful in getting the Infra Grant for the Downtown Mile Project was because there was this additional money put into infra. So it was a huge victory, and we'll continue to look for opportunities to fund city priorities in terms of transportation and infrastructure through the IIJA and some of these grant programs. Obviously, water and storm sewer and stormwater infrastructure is really important. We've been utilizing the environmental infrastructure project-- environmental infrastructure program, rather-- for a lot of important key priorities, kilos and some of the other basins. We're using that. We've got about six more projects on the priority list. We'll continue to work to fund some of these and work again through the IIJA on a number of these important projects. Obviously, forest health is critical for FRI and FWPP. We've been able to utilize lots of federal dollars to help keep Flagstaff, you know, away from fires and potential catastrophic wildfire. Continue to work on that as well as-- and I would like to note that our newest Congressman, Congressman Crane, who I just met with again earlier today and his staff, they really want to lean in heavily on forest health and be really helpful where they can. So I think this is an issue where we can be, again, very, very influential, and he's likely going to be on the House Natural Resources Committee, which has jurisdiction over a lot of federal agencies, and he can be very effective in helping us push that. And again, that kind of relates to post-wildfire flood mitigation. I want to let you know that in the omnibus appropriations bill that was just signed into law last weekend, this past weekend, that there is going to be $925 million for the Emergency Watershed Protection Program. Senator Kelly, Congressman O'Halloran, and Senator Sinema fought really hard for those funds. That will take care of every project that's on the priority list. So I know Flagstaff had one. The county has several. We're looking at probably in and around the area of Flagstaff over $50 million in EWP funds. In addition, the Forest Service was given $210 million through that program, and that will take care of some of the roads and some of the mitigation there. It was actually $100 million less than we asked for, but still a huge bump up, and that will help mitigate some of these post-wildfire flooding that has decimated the city. Rural broadband continues to be an important issue, not only in Flagstaff and Cookinaw County, but really across all of Arizona. Arizona Commerce Authority, and Todd will probably get into this to some degree, too, has a lot of money available. There are more federal programs. There's a new program through NTIA, National Telecommunications Infrastructure Program and Agency, and that has a ton of money for rural broadband. There's also a new program that provides a $25 a month subsidy for those that can't afford internet or need an internet connection. So this adds more competition and more viability, hopefully faster speeds. And I know we've worked with the IT Department and CJ Perry and others at the city to find what the best partner is in for that. The airport, of course, has always been a critical part of Flagstaff's growth and economic development. We've got the snowmaking equipment. We're working on currently getting more the snow equipment building. And so, we're in the process of getting half the funding this year. We'll continue to work with Stacy BK and all of her great staff over there to get the remainder of that in the airport improvement program, but we'll work on other things as well. Amtrak, there is more money in the IIJA for Amtrak. There will continue-- the Southwest Chief will continue to be an important focus point for us to ensure that that continues. We're also working on getting a Chrissy grant for the south side of Amtrak, so there'll be two entrance points to get on and off the train at the Amtrak station, including adding some accessibility, ADA accessibility on the current platform. So that's something that we'll continue to work towards, and we got our members to sign a letter in support of that Chrissy grant for about $7 million. Next slide. Affordable housing. This is an issue, obviously, that's critical to Flagstaff. Flagstaff has the third most expensive zip code in Arizona behind Sedona and Scottsdale. It's critical that we find some ways to get some affordable money, affordable housing money, and we'll continue to work with HUD and some of the Community Development Block grant programs to push funding there. Immigration reform is another issue where there may be some headway this year. I think there's some consensus with regards to DACA, children that were born here that still aren't citizens, and in some other immigration forum. I think you'll see a real push this year to try to do immigration reform, and I think that's one area where the Republican House and the Democratic Senate and the President can come together. This is an issue that's really been on the table for a long, long time, and they haven't had any resolution. This may be the year it finally happens. And then, finally, you know, veterans, the veterans population is critical at Flagstaff, especially all the Native American brothers and sisters who've come down from the Navajo Nation. They serve at a higher proportion than any other segment of society. Obviously, we have the new Veterans Home and Veterans Facility on Macmillan Mesa, and that continues to be a focus, obviously, and we'll continue to work on those issues. And then, of course, the Grand Canyon is critical to tourism growth and protection there. I will caution where Congressman Grahava, Chairman Grahava formerly, was very instrumental in pushing this legislation through. We're going to meet loggerheads with a Republican House who will not see eye to eye on that issue. We should still work towards it. I think it's important to continue to educate our members as well as members that may not be from Arizona. But the reality is that this is going to be a lot, a lot harder issue to push because of Republicans who have been reticent to expand Grand Canyon boundaries or really any national park boundaries. And finally, this is an issue where I think we can work with both sides again is the transport of uranium. Obviously, an accident on one of our highways near Flagstaff would be catastrophic, so we can continue to work with Department of Transportation. We can work with some of our members of Congress and others to ensure that these methods are safe and efficient in the transport of some of these projects. Climate change has always been a very important issue, and I know Nicole and her team, Sustainability Team of the North, have done a great job. One of the places where, again, I think we could find some consensus is on the carbon fee and dividend legislation. Republicans generally aren't supportive of some of the president's climate change agenda and will not be on the same page, but there are, again, carbon offsets and some of those things where I believe that there can be some openings where we can work with some of our partners in Congress and elsewhere. Obviously, in the environment, in Dark Skies, where one of the leading places Flagstaff is for Dark Skies across the nation, really, and in northern Arizona especially, continue to look at opportunities to expand open space, whether that's through land trades or dealing with state lands and some of our federal partners. And we'll continue to work towards that. And of course, Endangered Species Act, you know, there will be funding there. The Act itself hasn't been reauthorized since 1976, so I don't expect that to be reauthorized, but the Act is continuing to work, and we'll continue to meet obligations under that and continue to educate some of our members of Congress with regards to those issues as it pertains to the ESA. And I think that's really it. I'll be happy to take any questions, concerns, feedback that you guys have. Again, I want to be clear, it's going to be a little bit different working with a Republican Congress, Republican House, that is, and there are issues that I think we can find common ground and work and do some things that would be really helpful to the city. Again, I hope to see you guys in a couple of weeks, and I look forward to hearing some of your concerns and continuing to partner with all the great successes we've had. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
I'll pass it to you at this point, if you'd like to take feedback on federal priorities now, we can, or we could go through state and take feedback at the same time.
Let's go ahead and do federal first. And thank you, Bob, and Anna. And does anyone have any questions or comments? Yes, Councilmember McCarthy.
Well, thank you, Mayor. And Bob, thank you. I'm absolutely looking forward to meeting with you, and if Anna's coming out, also her. The way you portrayed the Grand Canyon Protection Act, it almost sounded like people are thinking, well, we're expanding the size of the Grand Canyon. I don't think that's really what it is. I think it's more that what we're trying to do is protect the water quality and public health for some of our Native American partners. For the new council members, I might mention that we-- this council has met with most of the tribes in the area. And I remember specifically when we met with the Havasupai Council, the very first issue they brought up was uranium contamination of their water. They're very concerned about that, and I'm very supportive of any legislation we can do to protect the quality of water in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Did you have any response, Bob, Mr. Holmes?
Yeah, yes, thank you, Mayor Dagan. It was great to see you a few weeks ago. I-- the legislation that-- and the only reason why I say expansion, Councilmember McCarthy, is because Congressman Grahava's legislation would have expanded the boundaries, but I hear loud and clear what you're saying, and I-- again, I think we can find some places where we can work with especially the Republican House, but I just want to be realistic here that, you know, we won't have a champion-- like, we will have a champion, a Congressman Grahava, but we won't have a Republican House champion. So this is a much heavier lift in this Congress and in this environment.
Yes.
Well, I'll leave it up to you and the Congressman about strategy, but it would seem that if they back off on expanding the size of the Grand Canyon-- I mean, I personally would love to see the Grand Canyon expanded, but if we don't push on that and we just focus on the public health side of it, I think maybe the Republicans would be responsive to public health issues. Because if we get a situation where the Havasupai tribe, for instance, gets their water supply contaminated, then we may be going to Congress asking for more money to help them develop a water source, and it's probably way more cost-effective to prevent the damage in the first place than it would be to try to mitigate it after the damage is done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Yeah, I think those are-- yeah, Councilmember, I think those are very good points, and I think that, you know, we have to tailor our message, and I think a message like you're saying is something that can be met with openness here, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember House, and then Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Holmes, this is admittedly going to be a poorly formed question, so I apologize in advance, but as you were talking through the priorities in terms of infrastructure and environmental issues, one thing that came to mind was just in this past year's post-wildfire flooding incidents, we had some major issues expressed within-- concerns expressed within the community when it came to things like the National Flood Insurance Program, where, you know, we had citizens being recommended to pursue that as an option because of the catastrophic flooding that they were facing and just them having issues with determining eligibility, seeing exacerbated rates because of the fact that it was in the midst of a post-wildfire event and so forth. So I'm just wondering maybe how we advocate for either changes in that program or how that fits in terms of our priorities for post-wildfire and infrastructure and environmental.
Councilmember House, I think that's a really good question, and I've seen some correspondence with regards to, you know, the huge cost increases for insurance. And I think you make a really, really good point that we need to find a way to address it. Now, we've looked at adding wildfire as one of the emergent-- one of the disaster areas where there's disaster relief. There-- it currently isn't listed as one of those. So that's one of the things we're working on, but I think, to your point, I think we need to address the committees of jurisdiction and work with our members to address some of these insurance rates that, you know, in some cases have gone up 10,000%, and it's just, it's not affordable or sustainable, and people can't just get insurance. So I think that's something that we should focus on, and I appreciate the question about that.
Thank you so much for that, Councilmember House. Vice Mayor Aslan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hi, Bob. I hope things are going well over there in DC. I know our new Congress just adjourned for the day without a lot of order and movement on some important early stuff, but I won't get bogged down in talking about that. I just want to chime in to say, you know, as one of the authors of this federal landscape and proposed legislative priorities over the past four years, I'm very much in favor of just continuing forward with momentum on all these things listed here. I can't think of anything I'm really too eager to get rid of. I do see a lot of places where, you know, our federal efforts are going to coincide mutually, synergistically with our state efforts, so I'm also looking forward to that conversation with Todd here in a moment. Our-- keeping our eye on the ball of the Rio de Flago is obviously really, really important, and that'll be-- it'll feel really nice to check that box here sometime in 2023. Of course, we don't want to let up on that even once things are in motion, so let's stay really prioritized on that. I do want to just give a particular shout-out to Dark Skies as a priority, anything we can do with federal money or to leverage our federal partners to expand Dark Skies protections into a regional sort of thing, something that I'm really excited about. It's a vision I've had for a while, and a lot of people do around here, and I want to see all those dots connected so that we increase the-- we decrease our light domes around here even further. It's part of our national security, of course, with the US Naval Observatory in the area. It's a major, major boon to the state economy and to the economy of the region. So important to keep our eye on that ball in particular. Just wanted to lift it up. And then, you know, I don't know, Bob, if you are aware that we had a special council meeting at the beginning of the summer to talk about what to do with fireworks in Flagstaff. It has been a particularly dry summer. We've seen some big fires coming through here recently. And there was an effort to ban fireworks. I'm a little fuzzy on the details. I should have gone back and looking at some of this stuff a little bit further, but we agreed that we didn't need to do that, but maybe we could make it a legislative priority to ask for greater home rule in terms of campfire bans and making sure that, you know, we can keep people out of the forest. It'd be really nice for locality like Flagstaff to have a little bit more autonomy and say, and when those rules come into effect and go out of effect, obviously, that's a heavy lift with the US Forest Service and the other agencies that have jurisdictions around here, but that's-- that might be a bit of something to add to the list. And Todd, I hope you're taking note of that, too. It's definitely a level in terms of home rule and whatever we can do to have those switches that we can flip on and off for forest protection. It's very, very relevant to the safety and security of our community and our future. I'll probably leave it at that. I just want to mention, too, to the newer council members, this may feel fairly overwhelming. I know it felt that way for me when I first came on board. And we can always revisit this anytime we want to throughout the year. I think it's great that we're doing this right now, right away with the new council, but there may be blind spots or priorities that arise out of having been on council for a few months that aren't showing up here. Feel free, always feel free, to approach leadership and the mayor about maybe revisiting this list whenever we need to. But for now, I think it's a wonderful, living, working document, and I'm looking forward to getting back into some of these halls of power at the state and federal level over the next couple of years and cranking away at these priorities.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other discussion points, Councilmember McCarthy?
Well, I've made some specific comments about the Grand Canyon and water quality, but I just wanted to say I reviewed the list, and it looks good. It looks solid, and I'm very supportive of what staff is presenting. Thank you.
I just have a couple of really quick things. One thing for the public's knowledge, Bob, I believe that you said snowmaking rather than snow removal for the equipment out at the airport. So the-- we're looking to store snow removal equipment. And would you, also for the public, either you or Sarah could talk about the project that Flagstaff is going to be able to complete because of the emergency watershed protection money?
Bob, feel free to go ahead.
Yeah, so there's one specific request. So let me go back for a second. The $925 million that the-- that's going to be funded in the Emergency Watershed Protection Program under the Natural Resource Conservation Service, NRCS. I speak in acronyms because I'm from DC here, but so the NRCS, the EWP under the NRCS, that funds the whole entire priority list. The city of Flagstaff had one project on that list, $750,000. I forget exactly what it was for, but I can get it to everyone and get it to you, Mayor. But this-- in and around the city, there's over 50 million, well, almost $50 million in projects. NRCS has funded $29.6 million so far in county projects, you know, around 180, 89, and so forth. and, and so forth. One of the things we're trying to also do, and why we're working with Forest Service and getting money in there, is because we want to do some on-forest mitigation that will help mitigate before it gets down into the city. The problem is, right now, with NRCS, you don't, that EWP funds, you can only use those funds on private land and city land. So you can't use it on the forest. So we need that buffer, and that's why we worked on both segments of that. But to get, to get back, everything on the priority list will be funded, including about $50 million, including $50 million for the county and 750,000 right in the city of Flagstaff.
Thank you. Sarah, do you have any additional information about that project in the city limits?
I don't, but I bet we can follow up with our stormwater team and get you guys a informative email very soon.
Okay, thank you. I see Ed in the background. Thank you, Ed.
Sorry, I walked a little bit up.
Well, you didn't know I was going to ask this question.
No, it's a great question. I'm going to get over here. So for EWP, we did receive 2.4 million this last year for the Schultz Basins. We did also, as Bob mentioned, submit for another roughly 750,000, and that's for channel stabilization downstream of those basins. So it's to stabilize the channel through a series of private properties, including Museum of Northern Arizona, for the flows that we're expecting to see out of the detention basins before they get to Highway 180. Unfortunately, we were not deemed eligible to submit for EWP funds for hardened, typical, traditional stormwater infrastructure. So that's why there is not a submission in for the Highway 180 culvert. We did reach out to our, the NRCS staff, Natural Resource Conservation Service, who do administer the EWP funding, and they deemed that ineligible before we submitted. So unfortunately, that did have to come back out.
All right. And, and did you say that we've submitted the grant for the 750K? Or was that part of what has come in from the NRCS?
No, so we submitted, so that is on the waitlist that Bob mentioned. That is the one project for EWP that the city will receive if this funding, well, it sounds like the funding has gone through.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right. Any other discussions, points, questions? All right, so we will now move on to our state priorities.
Madam Mayor, City Councilmembers, Todd Medex, I'm with Elevated Advocacy, and I've been working on behalf of the city of Flagstaff at the state level for some time now. And so we're going to get started. I'm going to take a little different approach than what Bob took. There we go. So essentially, what's, I, I know some of you, for those of you that, that I, I'm just meeting for the first time, my name is Todd Medex, and I worked at the County Supervisors' Association for about 16 years. I worked at the Arizona State Senate for about three years, and, and then in between, I worked at the Department of Real Estate and with some other executive agencies before I moved up here to Flagstaff. I represent the county, Coconino County, at the, at the state level, and I also represent the city of Flagstaff. A lot of times, the, the interests of the two bodies converge, and so it's, it's very simple. On the off chance that, that the city and the county disagree about a topic, I excuse myself. And, and basically, I don't take a position one way or the other one, either of your paths, at the, at the, at the state level. What we're showing here are some, the first three topics that we kind of have outlined for city councils prior tiers, they've existed going into now, but we think they have withstood the time, the test of time, and they sort of outline the sandbox by which we operate at the state level while you all are here conducting day-to-day operations. First one is preserve local decision-making. We firmly believe that, that, and, and you all have adopted or, or bodies before yours have adopted the idea that the city council is most adept at making decisions that affect the local community. And so those decisions should not be made in Phoenix. They should be made here in Flagstaff on our behalf, on, on the citizens' behalf, and those should be reflected in the makeup of the council, and they should be reflected by the decision-making, as a decision-making body. Similarly, state shared revenues. We pay in a certain amount of money to the state, and we feel like the, the formula that dictates how that money comes back to the community should be maintained. Those monies should not be diverted for the whims of a state body like the legislature or the governor's office. And so no matter who is sitting there, no matter who is making the decision, we feel two things. The decision-making should be at the local level, and we should get our money back. It's not a partisan issue. It's a simple decision-making issue. Short-term rentals is the third one. You know, some time ago, the previous governor, Governor Ducey, decided that short-term rentals should be allowed without restriction across the state. We found some problems with that as, as times had moved forward, and we found some, some unintended consequences to that. And so we've, we've sought to sort of address those as time, as the situation has moved forward. Unfortunately, at the last session, one thing you all will be aware of is we, we addressed some of the periphery concerns with the issue. And so we, we attempted to get some of the periphery items discussed and addressed. Unfortunately, the statewide association felt it necessary to, to concede that we would not, that they would not seek a change in legislation for the next five years. Counterintuitive, given what was on the political landscape, but, you know, that was a decision they made. And so they've signed an agreement that they will not move forward with anything that changes the short-term rental legislation at the state. It's something that you all should decide and kind of contemplate and sort of think about with staff and discuss. So then we start breaking down some of these topics as they start getting down into more specific areas. We're going down from the 30,000-foot level, now we're at the 20,000-foot level. Forest health. You know, if the forest burns in Flagstaff, it doesn't matter if you're Republican or Democrat. It's a nonpartisan issue. It's going to burn your house down. It's going to burn the town down. And frankly, we wouldn't survive a catastrophic wildfire that occurs. And so we're taking, with partners at the federal level, with partners at the state level, and partners in the private sector, we're, we're trying to take steps to say, okay, let's mitigate those threats as much as possible. In the past, in the past year that I've been doing this, I have talked to people who have told me candidly, and I won't tell you who their names are right now, but they will tell me, listen, the forest is going to burn. It's a matter of, is the forest going to burn when we are okay with it burning? Or is the forest going to burn when we can't stop it and the city of Flagstaff has sandbags all around downtown, and we're just living behind sandbags for the next 10, 20 years? It's a real issue. And so we approached the state, and this is probably one of the top issues that we're approaching the state with, is to say, okay, we need to accelerate the mitigation process. We need to accelerate the management process and understand that our lives are dependent on it. And so we, we face that with some serious, well, with some serious determination. Transportation. I, I drive, between January and June, I drive I-17 more times than I care to admit. I mean, it's, it's, it's a miserable commute. It's also very easy. It's also a very first country problem to have. But the issues that exist in Flagstaff regarding transportation are, we have to have some sort of a steady fund of maintenance to just maintain the roads we have. We don't, the state has no money for new road construction. If, if you are coming onto council thinking, okay, we're going to build a new road, man, right now, I'm here to tell you, right now, what we're focused on is maintaining the roads we have and trying to maintain a steady calendar of, of approach so that we are not facing a degradation of our resources that we have. We're not looking at trying to build new roads at this point. We're just looking at trying to preserve. And so my job at the state level is to try and go down and say, okay, this, this, the great state of Maricopa County is, you know, it's sort of tongue-in-cheek to say that, but, but there is a state outside of Maricopa County. And so we need to make sure that those resources are given to the appropriate agencies in those areas so that we can maintain our roads. And then affordable housing is the third one. You know, this ties back into short-term rentals. These are, again, 30,000-foot to 20,000-foot. It's, the 30,000-foot is short-term rental regulation, but the 20,000-foot is, we have no, you know, supply for affordable housing in the area. And so how do we, how do we cultivate? How do we develop? How do we, how do we encourage those projects that lend themselves to real housing solutions as opposed to, we're going to rent out a building by the bed, or we're going to rent out a building, you know, for investors from out of state? The third one, I'm going to start with rural broadband because I think Bob hit on this, and he's, he's exactly right. You know, this is, if COVID has taught us nothing, it's that rural broadband accessibility is probably vital to the national economy. Too many people are, are willing to work in Flagstaff, willing to live in Flagstaff so long as we have the ability for them to do their jobs. And increasingly, that's a broadband accessibility. And then the final one is Arizona Corporation Commission. You know, Councilman Aslan was, was one of the lead champions for this. It's like, you know, what you're deciding at the Corporation Commission has an impact at the city level. And so we need to make sure that those, those decisions, as they contemplate them, they understand what the city's position is coming down on that. Again, not a legislative body, it's sort of a statewide administrative body, but it's something that we have, that you all have decided is something you want to pursue. I don't know if I have another slide after this. That's council feedback. I think what I would kind of push to you all to understand is where Bob is working at a pace that exceeds a year in length, I work at a pace where it's about 100 days. Our decisions, if they do not decide something within 100 to, say, 120 days, they're not going to decide at this session, and so they punt it off to the next year. All of the things we talked about last year, they still might come into play this year. All of the things we talked about two years ago, they might come into play this year. Guess what? All of the things we talked about seven years ago, eight years ago, they're going to come into play again at some point in the future. And so you've heard the, you've heard the saying, history doesn't repeat itself. It doesn't, but it sure rhymes. And so we're going to hear those things again and again. Supervisor, I'm sorry, Councilman Aslan, you brought up something with, with the federal legislation that was interesting to me. What was that topic?
Oh.
You asked me to pay attention to it.
Was it about forest health? Autonomy on when we're allowed to burn around the city and, and forest access?
So all of those, yeah, it was something along those lines. All of those things, the state has a certain propensity to decide that they understand better for local communities to decide what they want to do. And it's incumbent upon me to sort of carry the message forward to say, you all are not right. And so you have to sort of speak truth to power at times to say, you think you're doing the right thing, and we appreciate it, but in fact, what you're suggesting does not work in the city of Flagstaff. And so there's, and there is, there's a tantamount. It's, we have to educate you about what's going on as, in terms of public policy, but we also have to educate you in terms of that you think your idea is new, and frankly, it's not. It's something that has been discussed before, and here's what has come from it, here's what the, again, the unintended consequences of what your decision may bring. And so we, we kind of go into those things with the legislature, understanding that they're new and sort of saying, okay, well, let us help you as, well, as a lobbyist for the city, but as council members for the city, let us explain to you where the rubber hits the road and how your decisions are going to influence how our citizens live in our community. And so to the point that, that Sarah made, we're going to be asking some of you to come down and sort of meet with the legislative delegation. I like to tell people when we do orientation, I like to tell people, you know, that the legislature will meet with any individual they want. You know, they, they, they love to hear from the citizens. They love to hear from real people. Unfortunately, lobbyists are not real people. And so they look at me and they take it, and we're friends, and it's, it's well-received. But when they hear it from you, you all are able to say to them, we share the same constituency. I represent the same people. You represent Representative Doe, Representative Smith. It doesn't matter. I represent the same people you do, and I'm looking to do the same thing you are, which is to make the best public policy decisions I can on their behalf. And so I guess as I wrap it up, as I'm sort of closing up, what I would try and get across to you is, these folks are not your enemies. They're your partners. You know, they're your partners. And some of you know my wife. I don't agree with my wife on everything, okay? Don't tell her, but I don't. You don't have to, yeah, probably luckily. You all don't have to agree with the legislators on everything. What you have to do is find the common ground and say, okay, well, where can we agree? And the things we disagree on, let's disagree on. But the fact is, maybe criminal justice reform at the state level has, has impacts at the local level, and maybe there are things we can get behind on that. Maybe forest health, the forest not burning, maybe that's not a Democratic or Republican issue. Maybe that's just good. Maybe the forest not burning is good. You know, and so let's, and I'm willing to partner, I'm willing to help you, I'm willing to show you where we can do that. But let's find those areas where the state legislative branch can identify with you the common areas that benefit the people of this community. And so that's what I would leave to you tonight, to sort of look at and say, okay, we're not going to agree on 100%, but let's find the 50%. Start at 50. Let's find half of what we can agree on. And then if we get up to 60 or 70, man, then we're betting 1,000. It'll be great. And Madam Mayor, with that, I'm happy to answer questions if there are any.
Thank you very much. We had a question from the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, thank you, Todd. I was wondering for clarity purposes if you can circle back to the topic of short-term rentals. Couple of areas for clarity. You referenced a five-year delay by the Arizona League of Cities in terms of advocating for additional regulations related to the short-term rental industry. We were understanding that it was three years, and I'm not sure which, but if it's something that you're familiar with, it would be good to have that clarity. And along the same topic, we were not aware of that representation by the league. I don't know that it went to a formal vote, but it was a surprise to us here in Flagstaff to hear of that representation by the league. And I'm wondering if there's any opportunity to elaborate upon how that decision came about. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Greg, I will tell you honestly, I thought it was a, the original, the original proposal was a five-year. If what they agreed on was three-year, I'm willing to be corrected. And so I would have to go back and look at what they actually signed. I only found out about the signature when Sarah sent it to me, so I'd have to go back and look at that. You know, the negotiations with the league were robust, and there were a number of cities across the state who felt like they needed clarity to more closely regulate public safety and health issues. Quite honestly, some cities in the state felt they already had that authority. Flagstaff was one of them. And so we passed those ordinances that did not restrict the establishment of a short-term rental, but did say, okay, there are certain things you have to abide by to protect the health and safety of our citizens. So what was agreed to was sort of already implemented by half of the state. And the concession that the, that the stakeholders from the short-term rental community gave us was saying, okay, we'll give you this as long as you agree to a moratorium for a fixed amount of time, three years or five years. And so that's where we are in now. My understanding, I've heard the second hand, is the league's position is, well, we're not going to do anything, but if cities want to pursue legislation in their own self-interest, of course, it's their right to do so. I, I find it disingenuous to think if you don't have a unified municipal front, that we're going to be able to... that we're going to be able to successfully get some sort of additional regulatory authority out of the legislature. Frankly, with this legislature, I'd find that an uphill battle anyway, regardless of what the league suggested. So I don't know that their agreement did much. If it's only three years, I'm, you know, it certainly is better than a five-year moratorium. I think that the number-one aspect of the short-term rental, the biggest thing that changed was that the executive changed. Governor Ducey had made it very clear, he was not going to repeal his signature law. He was not going to mitigate the effects of that law. And so we were faced with a, sort of taking to him a consensus legislation that said, okay, everyone agrees, this is a step forward. And he would sign it. With a new executive, that's not necessarily the case. We don't have that, we're not constrained by that, okay, the executive is automatically on their side. At this point, we could go forward, saying the executive has an open mind. And so let's go forward and state our case to the executive and state our case to the legislature. Unfortunately, the legislature hasn't changed enough. And so, you know, because we have a split government, this is what we have to do. We have to get it through the legislature. You have to get 16, 31, and 1. I mean, that's really what your math is. And I'm a political science major, so it's very simple. That's what you have to get to. Unfortunately, the policy topics make it difficult at best. And so I hope I'm answering that, I hope I answered that question.
Thank you, Mayor, if I can. Three years? Looks like five years. Definitely a little confusion on the three versus five, but it looks like five years. And one final comment on this, at the risk of sounding like I'm getting into some commentary, which I am, I don't think it's good practice for our league, which represents all the cities and towns throughout the state, to take positions of any moratoria on policy matters in a rapidly changing landscape where issues emerge, as they have in Flagstaff with fires and floods as one example. Our need to regulate locally sometimes is not well-understood statewide. And our circumstances are sometimes unique. To have a league that represents us take a position that will be hands-off for five years on something that is a very important topic here and to our surrounding communities, it just seems like a very egregious step in the arena of policymaking and advocacy. That's a commentary, and I apologize for straying into that area, but I just wanted to share it. I think perhaps the city should make that position known to our representative league at some point.
Thank you, City Manager. That was very well said, and I completely agree with everything that you just said. And I'm seeing some nodding heads, too. Councilmember McCarthy, did you have something you wanted to say?
Well, I just wanted to say that I agree with what the city manager just said, and thank you for stating it in this public meeting. You know, I just looked at my own street, and there's several houses on my street that only have someone in them one day a month. It's wasted housing. And it's a shame that we have, you know, people come up one day a month, or they come up one weekend a month and have a party house. Yet there's people, they can't find a place to live. I find that very problematic. And so if there's anything we can do in the long term, and I think with the state legislature, I think we should do that as much as we can. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a comment from Vice Mayor Aslan.
Yeah, just real quickly, weighing in here. Again, as part of someone who wrote these legislative priorities over the past several years, very in favor of moving them forward. Todd, thank you for mentioning the ACC. Admittedly, over the past couple of years, I don't think we've done much to communicate with them directly. I blame COVID for that. It'd be nice to get back into the habit of going down there and meeting with them in person and developing some of those relationships in terms of real warm bodies. And I'm not sure what else I want to say. I did want to give you the chance to weigh in, if you wanted to, a little bit on the shifting politics in the state of Arizona and what that means for home rule, what that means for our list of priorities here. Obviously, we have a switch in the governor's office. We have a new attorney general coming in. There's going to be a different paradigm now. I think we're going to be able to think a little bit differently and a little bit more assertively about some of these things that we've been stepped on about for the past several years. And if you're willing to and want to, I give you the opportunity to comment on that. Otherwise, I'm looking forward to getting back in the swing of things again at the state capitol.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to getting back in the swing of things, too.
All right, thank you. And we have a question from Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of points of clarification. So when did this three-to-five-year decision get made? And were we a part of that decision? So in essence, was anyone from Flagstaff at that meeting when they decided the three-to-five-years moratorium?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Harris. So the decision was made in the middle of the session last year. So sessions run from January to June roughly, for the sake of argument, just six months, first six months. So probably around February or March of last year was the first I'd heard about it. I had been attending the stakeholder meetings regarding short-term rentals. Sarah had been a part of some of the meetings. I don't know if she was at the meeting where they first proposed the idea that they were going to do a moratorium. There were cities present. I was present, so City of Flagstaff was represented. Other cities that were there were definitely, the city of Scottsdale was there. There were some other valley cities there. I don't know that there were other northern Arizona cities there, except, Madam, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Harris, Sedona was present. I think that there was some, there were some pushback on the moratorium suggestion. And from that point, I couldn't tell you what the decision-making process was as far as them deciding to sign the moratorium or not. The last time I remember them talking about it was probably, I would say, late February, early March.
Madam Mayor, can I follow up?
Yes, please.
This sounds kind of, this is concerning to me that we're a part of a group that makes decisions, and we're not exactly sure how those decisions are made and when they were made. I'm not, don't hear me blaming anyone because I don't know enough about how it works. But it sounds like a decision was made, and we don't, it sounds like we're not in agreement with that decision. And so I guess I would say, do we have, did we have an opportunity to state that? This is just kind of confusing for me, how we can be a part of a group. And I know that we only have one vote if it's a group of cities. But it seems like we're kind of surprised about this. I don't know.
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman.
Just a statement.
Councilwoman Harris, I would say that your questions are shared by a number of people in this room and certainly by a number of people that were present. And I'll also say this, the League of Cities and Towns is a valuable, valuable partner for us to have in Phoenix. And so I don't want to say, oh, my gosh, the League of Cities and Towns threw us under the bus or did something, you know. They are a valuable partner, and I would not, I would say you all need to be very appreciative of their staff work and of what they can accomplish down there with partnership. That being said, I don't know how they came to the decision about the moratorium. I'm not privy to a lot of the internal workings of the league. As a contract lobbyist, I'm invited to certain things, and I'm not invited to other things. And so, you know, I take access where I can get it. But I also remember what my mother said, is you never want to go to a party you're not invited to. And so it's, I kind of have to walk that tightrope. And I understand your confusion, Councilwoman Harris. I don't think you're alone in that confusion.
But I'm, Madam Mayor, and excuse me, I wish I was there in person so I could be more formal. But I'm not making any statements or judgments about the work that that particular group does. So please don't hear me saying that. Hear me saying that I'm concerned that a group made a decision, and we did not agree with that decision, and there was nothing kind of said about it because it sounds like it was a surprise to us. So I'm not making any kind of a statement about that group or their ability to work and to help us do whatever it is that we need to do down in Phoenix. So let's just get that straight from the get. What I'm concerned about is that how the decision was made and that we weren't aware of that decision, or it appears that we weren't. And so I'm not going to prolong this anymore. Madam Mayor, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. And our city attorney has a comment.
Oh, it's more just for, thank you, Mayor, more just for clarification purposes, informational. The agreement between Expedia and Airbnb and the League of Arizona Cities and Towns was signed on June 24th. I believe we became aware of it mid-December, mid-February sometime.
Thank you. Do other council members have questions or comments? Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. One thing that I'm wondering, it seems that we're kind of just ignoring, is wildlife corridors. It seems that a few years ago, we would talk about wildlife corridors, but I don't see any discussion about that now. You know, is this a game and fish issue or whatever? But, you know, I think if we're not cognizant of wildlife corridors, that we could in effect build dams or roadblocks, however you want to, what analogy you want to use. So I'm, you know, is that something we would reach out to Game and Fish? Or is there something that's off the table? Or please comment. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember McCarthy, I don't know that I've ever worked on wildlife corridors for the city of Flagstaff since I've been a contractor here. So I would say that if that were something the council would want to pursue as a priority, I would ask you to say, okay, at what level is wildlife corridors a priority, given the other priorities we have? And then I would probably pursue it through Game and Fish. I think that's probably most likely the first place I would start.
I'm not going to say that it's our highest priority by any means, but I think it should be on the list. I don't know what the other council members think, but my opinion, it should be on the list.
No, I understand. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? All right.
Yeah, sure. Madam Mayor, yeah, I just wanted to support Councilmember McCarthy's assertion. Wildlife corridors are something that I'm very familiar with in terms of my other role as a wildlife biologist and conservationist. I think they are important. And I just want to put my weight behind his suggestion that we have someone at least looking into that. I like the idea of partnering with Game and Fish on that. It's a different agency to be working with. It's one thing they can do that we don't need, you know, we've got a long list of other things we're already working on with our new governor and new legislature. If we can go to a different agency to talk about one of these things that's also important and definitely ties into forest health and habitat restoration, I'm all for it, especially when it comes to, you know, this connects over to ADOT a lot, too. A lot of these corridors are going to have to go under highways and whatnot. So it's a larger conversation, and I know it's something that's important, too. Mr. Buttigieg in Washington, DC. And there's federal dollars tied into those efforts as well. Just might be another way to bring some money into the state and into the region and into our city. As we continue to build, we need to have these wildlife corridors and migration ways, pathways maintained and prioritized. So I just want to add my weight to that. Thank you.
So, Madam Mayor, and Councilmember Aslan, what I'm hearing is that this is really a federal issue. And so, you know, I'd support that. We're happy to look at the state issues as issues arise. And that sort of brings me to what I would like to sort of point out to all of you all is, this is the beginning of the conversation. This is not the end of the conversation. We're not deciding something here. This is, we're laying the groundwork today. But as wildlife corridors become an issue at the state, we can get involved. And, you know, Sarah and I are a very close team. We work very closely, very well together. You will hear, please pay attention to your emails. You will hear from me throughout the legislative session. I will send you emails. Please read them. I know what it's like to get emails all the time. Skim them, and if you have questions, you can call me. As these wildlife corridors come up, or as other things that we haven't even thought of today come up, we'll put them back in front of you, and we'll ask what your opinions are. And we'll ask you to say, okay, well, what does the community feel about this? What do you think? But what we'll ask you for is a quick turnaround. We're going to tell you, hey, you have to decide this quickly. We can't have a whole lot of back and forth. We can have some, let's have some back and forth. But we need to decide something in X number of hours, and I'm thinking like 48 hours. So be aware, be prepared, understand that what we're asking for are quick and dirty, and give us some sort of direction, like, do you support this? Do you oppose this? And if we can fix it, would you like to fix it in this direction or that direction? And then that lets us sort of, takes us off the leash, and we can go, and we can go back to you at some point later on and say, here's what we decided. Do you support it or not? So I think most of you understand that. Again, Madam Mayor, I'm here to answer questions if there are any. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, I don't see any more questions or desire to make any statements. So I think we are finished. And thank you, Todd, and Bob, and Sarah. Sarah, did you have any wrap-up?
Let me check, just a quick final slide, letting you know we'll be back next Tuesday with an updated list for you, and then we'll come back to you on the lobbying trips. So thank you for your input.
Thank you very much. All right, we're down to item number 12, public participation. Do we have anyone wishing to address us?